That's, yeah, um, beginning of the order, uh, so that would be quite a good way to do this. I did think.
The United States of America, and you're involved with a substantial, well, nation, I'm under God, individual liberty, justice, we're all.
And approval of the agenda?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things that I'd like to add. Um, late today, we received a, another food truck permit for Vinegar Hill under Black Salt LLC. Um, and then I have a catering permit from, um, I think it's from the Arundel Conservation Trust, but it's for Funky Bow for their event Trail Fest. I'd like to add that under new business. Believe you got, he, part of your packet, I believe I provided both of those additional documents to you.
I'd like, uh, committee and board reports. Um, I attended the last planning board meeting, so I'll give an update on that.
And?
Who has a?
Yeah, okay. Motion is to approve, but I have a second.
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Uh, public hearing for the food truck application for Great Wave Sushi.
And Black Salt LLC.
And Black Salt. LLC.
Yes, you have both applications within your, uh, packet, uh, um, Black, uh, Great Wave Sushi will be having a function there on the twenty-third from five to nine P M. Um, and I believe Black Salt has two functions that will be coming up, one on the twenty-fifth of this month from one to six, the other one will be, uh, October fifth from six to nine. Um, again, these, both of these applications are, um, for Vinegar Hill, which has received, um, past approvals for have food trucks in certain designations within their facility.
Okay, well, it doesn't look as though, does anyone here for the public hearing? Anyone have any comments on the public hearing? Then we'll close the public hearing. Public forum, public comment on non-agenda items. Sure.
As you guys have probably seen, everything's bright. It's a little early this year, which is a good thing. Um, so, um, we also did, like I said, Tony earlier, we did a little bit more of the edge striping, so, um, there's going to be a little bit more, um, cost involved in the budget as far as, you know, the striping goes. Next thing I wanted to mention to you, um, we've had a problem with the excavator. Um, it's going on now for the past hmm, two to three months. First, we ended up putting an E G I cooler in it and like what's called a dosing valve. And that was five thousand dollars. And it didn't take care of the problem. So, we've had Chadwick Bay Ross back out there now. I think today was the fifth time they've been there and he was there from seven o'clock this morning till four o'clock tonight. And right now is still sitting there dead in the water. It's worse now than it was because his computer, um, uh, yeah, collapsed, so. The other thing is they just put fourteen thousand dollars worth of bats into that last week, which was supposed to take care of the problem and it didn't. So, I'm not sure what this is gonna cost, but like I said, in the past, uh, probably two to three months, we put almost nineteen thousand dollars into that excavator.
Sorry.
We put almost nineteen thousand dollars into that excavator in the past two to three months.
Really? How many hours on it?
Uh, eighty-five hundred.
Have you ever had the, uh, D P F filter cleaned?
They, that's part of what they did. They could put a whole new exhaust system on it. The exhaust system alone was eight thousand dollars. So, and they did that filter and so, and, you know, it's too bad that we can't do a lot of this work because they have to come in with a computer and set all the parameters and stuff. So, there's a lot of stuff that we can't do. We're at the mercy of Chadwick Bay Ross.
What's it doing or what's it not doing?
It's thrown this code, code, and if the code is, it's all emissions. Every bit of its emissions, so. Um, he's been in contact, in fact, he was on the phone today with Volvo. And they're trying to figure this out. And then when his computer kind of went haywire, and so then he couldn't get back into the excavator to be able to at least make it run. So, he's coming back tomorrow.
There's so many senses on them things and it always takes one and they can do that.
And that's what he was saying too, that there's so many senses that, you know, it'll give you these, all these senses to check, but it won't pinpoint which one it is. So, wonderful world of computers.
Yeah, yeah. What's the machine worth, maybe five hundred dollars? Is it worth just to keep nothing money in there?
It's, I mean, it's, the machine's worth it, you know, I mean, I don't foresee us getting rid of it unless the staff really pick the time and ask the death, but I just wanted to let you guys know that, and I talked to Keith to let him know that.
Yeah, we had this conversation particularly on, uh, you know, it's ten years old, that we paid about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for it when it was brand new, so we, we're starting looking at the cost benefit analysis here as to, um, I don't think we're there quite yet. The money that we have invested in it, but obviously it's a concern.
Like I said, with his computer, it crashed on him and so he's waiting for it to disable it. Volvo was trying to send, to reboot his computer and for some reason it just wasn't happening, so. Well, like I said, I just gave you guys a quick update of what was going on and.
Yeah, excavators and Volvos, not only them, all of them, the newer ones, uh, you know, from the last seven or eight years out, can't do anything without a computer.
Yeah.
And, and they're, they're so finicky that there's always something going wrong.
That's what he was saying. He's, the, the parameters that they set are so tight now that it's, he says it's unbelievable. He says the emission, they're kind of, you know, tighten up the submission part and he says it's just unbelievable to try to get this thing right. So, and then software, he says, since, and he says, he couldn't put the E G I, um, cooler in without doing updates to the computer. So he says he had to do it and he says that's where he thinks the glitch is, is that what he ended into that isn't right.
Could have had a corrupt file or something that tried to put into the.
I don't know. I guess it's, that computer stuff's up, great domain was, you know, what they're doing, so. Like I said, I just want to give you a quick update.
People got money, general or?
Uh, right, right now it's coming out of his budget. And now, as I, as I told Terry, we'll continue to carry on his operating budget as normal. In the event that we get, you know, two-thirds through the budget and we see that this is really going to be over, we'll come back and have another conversation with you folks as to what, what kind of plans we need to do.
My main is like, it's only forty thousand dollars, right, so, I mean, it's better. After them, but they did say that there's a possibility that they could take the old mats and put that on. So they told us, don't get rid of those mats.
Yeah, no kidding.
Need credit uniform?
Okay. Gee, thank you, Terry, for that good news.
I'm just forward.
Yeah. Prove the minutes of July twenty-second?
Thank you. Our motion we approved as submitted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. All in favor? Okay, and committee and board reports, Dan?
Uh, planning board, August sixth, uh, two items. First item was, uh, Live Fifth, Live Fit Athletics LLC was a conditional use application. It's a proposal to create a private indoor community fitness center providing personal training, private group classes and lifestyle coaching. A parcel is located at twenty-six Commerce Drive in the D B two zone. Uh, the applicant will be leasing an existing five thousand square foot building which previously housed a private storage business. Uh, the owner of the parcel is Brymar Properties. The applicant and business owner is Chris, Christopher Gam. Um, they came in looking for some waivers, uh, right off the bat, the chair said, well, you know, we can't make this, uh, complete because you didn't check off the waivers box. Um, there was more discussion, the, the planner disagreed, Richard kind of really didn't listen to him. And they got into some more discussions down the road. Um, the stuff that he was looking for were environmental stuff, um, you know, uh, stuff that had already been approved from the existing building, so in real, in reality, they should just all be N A'd. Um, so the board kind of, um, agreed that that was okay. He was looking for, um, a waiver on the parking. The, uh, for five thousand square foot building, uh, parking requirement is much more, um, uh, excessive than what he needs, so he's looking to reduce that. Um, when all was said and done, uh, they decided that the application is complete with the condition that the checklist is complete, so, uh, that will be moving forward. The next item is Raptor Falls LLC site plan, uh, uh, site plan, sketch plan. This is a proposal to expand an existing business located, um, at, uh, nineteen twelve Portland Road in the B I zone. The expansion consists of a second hole mini golf course, a bumper boat pond, a climbing trailer, an outdoor seating patio, a party pavilion, a building as well as an access road with associated parking area. The owner of the property is Raptor Falls LLC. The applicants are Clifford and Bree Kajowski and the, the applicant engineer was Andrew Merle. Um, again, this was just a sketch plan. There were some residents in the very back, so the proposal is to take the parking and put the parking in the back. And the sketch plan showed the parking like pretty darn close right on their property line or right near their property line and they were like really all upset and, um, I get, but again, it was mentioned that, hey, this is just a sketch plan, um, and, um, after the meeting, yes, they were outside talking and it looked like everything was all pretty cool and amicable, so, you know, the, the, um, the applicant was, was very willing to, you know, we'll work with you. Again, this is just a sketch plan. Um, there was a discussion, uh, about the abutters list, apparently, um, uh, list didn't go out to all of the abutters. Um, there was one here that isn't a butter that did not get, um, any notification. And then there was a discussion on the seasonal cottages, whether it should be just the cottages that are but the property or because it's a condominium, it should go out to all of the, all of the cottages. Um, the planner said, well, you know, uh, you know, we need to get counsel to agree with that or to decide that. And, uh, we'll let the applicant do that. And Rich kind of looked at me and I like, well, I would tend to think that we would prefer us, our council to you make that decision rather than somebody else's counsel. So I think they were going to try to get a hold of Leah and talk to her to see what that, uh, which way to go. Um, and, uh, that was it. Uh, we adjourned at eight twelve P M.
Okay. And how about the manager's report, compactor and container status?
Uh, sure, uh, you know, Terry's here. He probably sheds a little bit more light on that, but, uh, unbeknownst to us, they, uh, they drove in today to install the compactor, um, and, uh, get everything up and running. I'm not sure they've completed their task that when they first initially spoke to us, they were, it was going to take a couple of days, so I'm, I'm sure they're still on that same, um, same, uh, avenue. Um, so it looks like the compactor and the new containers will probably be up and running for Wednesday. Uh, we hope, lock on some wood. Um, everything else is in, the A B, the A B switch is in. Uh, I think the electrician will have to come back um, and probably do some, some work there. Um, uh, Velma mentioned that, you know, we have, there's three bills in the accounts payable tonight to, to take care of a, a majority of the expenses related to that. Uh, still there's some money left that was approved at the special town meeting for this project. I'm sure we're going to be well within, um, our guide, the amount that we've requested to, to be used, so, uh, we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted on that.
They did have adjustments to, uh, the hop, there's the hopper on the, there's even the hopper on the old and it was, I think, sort of small than the new golf at them, so they're gonna have to do some little operations, so I'm not joking, that's gonna be an interim.
Yeah, I'm sure it will. Uh, just to let you know that we, we did send out, um, um, R F Ps for gas, diesel and propane. Uh, they'll be returned uh, for your business meeting on the twenty-sixth of this month. Um, so we'll see what kind of pricing we get there. I'm sure that we're going to get pricing that's, uh, based around, uh, whatever flexibility is, is provided under, uh, Portland Rack price, uh, pricing, so we'll see where it takes us, but hopefully we'll get some, um, we'll get some R F Ps in so we can take a look at them. Uh, the next thing I, uh, have and I've, we've got some mapping here, uh, that was provided to us as well, but uh, we had two meetings with M D O T. Um, the first one was on, uh, Tuesday, the seventh, I think Dan was there along with Representative, uh, Senator Ingraham was there, Terry and I were there. Um, and we were meeting with, uh, Steve Landry at Wayne Perry's home just to look at the road in terms of speed heading towards Limerick Road. Um, uh, Mr. Landry, uh, laid out a proposal that he thought would be helpful in terms of trying to, uh, slow speed down with not necessarily moving the speed limit sign down, but, um, putting other things in place. Um, what they talked about was to put, uh, additional, uh, double line at the middle of, uh, Route one eleven. Um, as you, as you're traveling down that section of road, um, it would, what it would do is it would, uh, create a, uh, atmosphere where folks, if they stay on the outside of the line, they'd be a little further away from the middle of the road, um, which uh, in conjunction with putting rumble strips on the breakdown lane would create a narrower travel lane for people and hence what they suggest is that once you narrow the travel lane, even though visually it hasn't narrowed, but the rumble ships create a narrower, um, you will calm traffic as a result of that. In addition to that, they, um, they continue to, uh, they want to put up, um, speed signs in both directions that would monitor speed that we could then, um, they would be permanent structures that then could be, uh, the information that's gathered on them could be downloaded. So we then could, uh, observe speeds at times, what's, what's occurring on the road in real time during those, um, those events that, um, that, that people feel that there's, that there's way too much speed. Um, those were the things that they, um, they thought that they could do there. Um, at the time, uh, and both Terry and I are in lockstep and I think that, uh, Dan, as well as Phil was at that meeting too, is that we still all believe that the, the speed should be reduced on that section of the road from the top of the hill to at least Hill Road, maybe, maybe further, just to s- to begin to, to slow the speed down. As, as you well know, you know, uh, for some reason I can't convince uh, the state engineers of this, they probably hear it all the time, but if the road is fifty, people are doing sixty. If the road's forty or forty-five, then they've, they'll be ten miles or over faster than that. So if it's at fifty, they're coming down that road over sixty. Now, I think our observations on that day, there were trucks that were even going up the hill faster than fifty. So, uh, we were there, we saw it. Um, those are the things that they're going to do. At least the rumble strips will be done in this next year during springtime. We've, uh, pressed upon them to get the, uh, speed, um, uh, locations in now. Uh, and then they suggested to us, uh, that we may want to, um, provide some signage on our own that they would install. So, uh, something we haven't really talked a lot about, but, um, something we'll probably have to give some thought to. Um, you know, danger intersection, please slow down. I, I, I'm not quite sure. I think I'd like to put our eggs into the, um, speed barrel at first to try to at least persuade them to consider it one more time, uh, in terms of the speed, because I'd, I think I'd prefer to see the speed the same throughout the whole corridor. Right now, it's, when you get to the top of the hill, it goes to fifty and it stays to fifty almost through the entire part of Arundel. Uh, where it's forty and forty-five at other spots. So if we could get it consistent throughout the corridor, I think that would be helpful at least to start with. So, that was our, um, that was our first meeting on, um, on Tuesday. Wednesday, we met with, um, another engineer, Dennis, what's his, every, and, 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 Emity. Dennis Emity, um, on the, uh, on two locations really, and I've got the mapping up there and I'll walk up there in a minute and, and show you some of that, but, um, we met at the Limerick Road, um, uh, Alfred Road intersection, and then we spoke about the Thompson Trout Brook, um, Arundel. Part of your packet has some of the information in there. What they, what they did is they provided us some information on impact of crashes, frequency of crashes. Uh, and then there's a criteria that they use that needs to, um, assure that through their data collection that they meet four, at least four criteria, three criteria of a point four system. Um, in both locations, um, the, the data indicates to them that there should be, um, something done at both locations. What they're proposing at, uh, Limerick Road and, uh, Alfred Road is to put in signals. Put in a, a signal and provide a turn lane heading eastbound on one eleven. So, um, I'll just walk up. So, so what they're planning to do is to signalize the, the intersection. They would have to also put a signal on, uh, the DeKindren's property because they'd have to be able to get in and out of their, out of their, uh, driveway. Um, the, heading westbound, which would be this way, they would put in a turn lane approximately, I can't remember how many feet it was, but uh, the turn lane would be there to allow traffic that's going down, uh, east on Limerick Road can continue to flow uh, along with this traffic. Um, there would be no additional turn lane heading right and heading east on Limerick. They don't think, there's not enough, uh, their data indicated there wasn't enough people turning that way to justify uh, the movement of, uh, a turn lane in that location. So, right now, um, they're, they're looking at signalization, a turn lane here, uh, signs, appropriate signs that would be put up. Um, and then we would queue this into whatever other, um, uh, intersection lights that we have along the corridor. The other thing that they looked at, and I don't have a, a copy of the map, is that one of the things that brought up at the, uh, at the meeting was to also the, uh, the possibility of putting a roundabout at this location and eliminate the intersections. Dennis got back to us today and indicated that the roundabout is definitely not feasible for that location. In that it would be, it would take too much land in order to put the roundabout in. We're only looking at uh, one lane of traffic either, either way. Um, in that, uh, the cost wasn't effective to, to do that part of the project. So right now they're leaning towards signalizing that location.
Do they have enough right away or do they need to take some land from the, that's historical society's land, right?
Well, it's, it's the Kindren's land.
Kindren's land. We only own three acres up near the houses.
Right, I, I'm not quite sure. They thought they'd have to do a complete survey, but they thought that there's a possibility that they have enough land in there to put that turn lane in um, at that location, so, um.
But yes, that's the Kindren land right there.
What they're, what they've proposed and, you know, uh, Terry and I've spoken about it, because of the length of this project, uh, the funding won't be in this project until twenty twenty-seven. So there'll really be no activity at this location until that time. Um, and the funding has to get approved and all those kinds of things. So I think with, with the, uh, speed, uh, us pushing upon, uh, the fact that we need to have a, the speed lowered on this road plus the rumble strips, plus additional signage and the speed signs, maybe we can provide a little bit more data for them to maybe reconsider and push this, uh, construction up a year or so. Um, but it didn't seem like it was resonating with anybody at this point, so.
Was that something that one, that we could get Wayne to help push?
Well, Wayne and Henry.
If this were the next funding year, which money hasn't been approved for yet, and I don't know if both feel you're, I just feel that was more than a roundabout, I'm gonna make, I know there's that, but that roundabout took, uh, if it's slowed down, it might solve it.
Well, that was, that was one of the things they said in the, uh, in the analysis that he provided us, and I gave the copy to all the select board members, but they said it was certainly would calm the traffic a little bit significantly more, but it's not cost effective. It's almost twice as much it would be to, to put the, um, to put the signals in. And that's, I, I think that's what they're looking at financially.
I talked to Dennis today, and Dennis told me that from a roundabout, you're like, only one person is seen. And for why you're looking at it one time, right? So, this is quite a deal.
Yeah, significantly, so, um, so I think they'd be looking for a, a blessing from this board, one way or the other, whether or not you're in favor of signalizing the, the intersection or if you felt that the roundabout was more appropriate. I think they'd be looking for, for that from, uh, from the town, so they at least have that. Uh, my thought is that we, um, unless there's strong objections with the board that we would, we would say that, you know, signalization is, is something that we endorse. However, I think we want to put back in there the caveat that we feel that that, that speed needs to be reduced throughout the entire corridor to try to assist that. Now, we, Phil had mentioned that when we were meeting in Tuesday about possibly having a lane, a turn lane here. They talked about that at the meeting, Phil, and there weren't enough, uh, uh, in their view and their, their, um, their study, there weren't enough cars turning that way and it should be in the report. There wasn't enough cars turning, um, if you're heading westbound, turning left onto Limerick, so they, they weren't recommending that as part of this project. So they, they weren't recommending that as part of this project. Any questions on that?
Well, I mean, I think, I think signal is the way to go, but when, when we get back to them, we should, you know, CC Henry and CC Wayne, because those are the folks that can, can push.
Oh, it's all, it's all gonna be on there.
Yeah, they get money sooner than later, so. I mean, Wayne's on the transportation committee and he's got a lot of clout, so.
So we'll, we'll certainly, yeah, it'll be, it'll be similar to the letter that we developed the last time and we'll keep everybody, uh, on board. The next, obviously, the next project was, um, Trout Brook and Thompson Road, uh, along. And what they're proposing there is to put, uh, turn lanes in both directions. Both right turn lanes, left turn lanes, as well as, uh, in, in both directions. So they're thinking about, um, starting a little bit further up the hill and creating a, um, uh, a turn lane heading eastbound, and then there'll be a turn lane heading westbound to try to assist the, uh, traffic in that location of making those turns. Um, they didn't seem that concerned about, they felt that that was a, a reasonable, uh, solution to the problem there. They, it did not, it did not warrant any signals there, but they felt that it did warrant, um, the turn lanes ba- based on the crash data that they had in their report. So, uh, and again, that is set for twenty twenty-seven construction as well. So if this all goes through, we would have two construction sites in Arundel at the same time. And you know what that will do with, uh, traffic as, as.
It'll slow it down.
It'll slow it down big time then. And then we don't know, uh, the status of what they're going to do with the, the bridge on thirty-five. We do know that they're gonna close that when they do that project. So, um, that, we're gonna have to address, or I don't know how we're gonna do it, and we'll have to, you know, put our heads together, but, um, you know what's gonna happen there. They're gonna come up thirty-five and they're gonna go down Perkins Lane, onto Thompson Road, and then left onto one eleven again to get up to Lyman, because they can't use thirty-five. So.
If that's part of their, their detour, then they should do what they did on New Road and put a temporary light up there.
Yeah, it's not part of their, uh, it's not a part of their detour scheme. What they're saying is to send people to one eleven, come up, if you're going up thirty-five, go to Bitterford and get off and come up one eleven and take the main turnpike. That's what they're saying.
Main turnpike to where?
Well, to thirty, to, to one eleven to go up that way. To, to go up that part of the, uh, of the state, up that, up in, upper part of York County. Not, not take thirty-five at all. So that's what they're telling, that's what their detour is. You and I both know that's not gonna work for locals.
But the people on that road are people that are going, heading up thirty-five and cutting across to get to one eleven, right? So those are people that would probably end up by cutting across the Thompson Road.
The locals will.
Right.
Yep.
The other folks are coming from one eleven and cutting across, so they would probably come all the way down and turn on the Limerick Road.
Could.
Back that way. I don't see how the turnpike comes into play here.
Yeah, we, we didn't either. But that was, that was part of their plan.
Tom, which way are you gonna go? You take the turnpike?
Yeah.
You take the turnpike to downtown Bitterford.
I'm gonna go, go right there.
There you go.
The other thing I'd like to add to that, because it was some good concern about, the turnpike that.
Okay.
Having to go take a look at that. So, basically what he told me is this, you'll see why I put the lane, but the traffic act on somebody else. He said, like, you're in the deep, nothing wrong with those lights or the delay or anything. So I told him, roll again, and it went some human, and he got back to the inception. And he said, and the only thing he did was he put fifteen second, he added fifteen seconds to the delay on all three. So, past the road. Eastbound and westbound on one eleven, and he added fifteen seconds to the delay. He says, that should help one eleven pass more traffic through. And also saying one, it'll, it'll let more traffic out. But he said, you're not gonna know that. And as far as they've mentioned about, uh, the AM and PM scheduling or the different, he says that that, uh, light doesn't matter.
That's Hill Road, right? You're talking about Hill Road?
Yeah.
Cause, cause Hill Road onto one eleven is quick. That's a real quick.
Yeah, I've seen that, with two cars out.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Not always.
That's, that's very quick. Yeah, I, I'd say more than two cars, but.
He says that they had watch, and he said that, um, he didn't see nothing, but he added fifteen seconds.
Well, fifteen seconds, fifteen seconds will get a couple of cars anyways, at least, if not more.
No, maybe we'll, we'll prevent some of those rear end crashes too. We'll see.
So even the turning lane at, um, Limerick Road and one eleven, they aren't gonna be even working on that until twenty-seven?
Correct. Yep.
I would think that's something at least they could do now.
Well, I think we, I think we certainly need to press upon them the, the speed, uh, and continue to harp on that. Um, and I, again, I'll put together a, a draft letter that I'll share with all you and we can approve it at your next meeting and send it along.
If that turning lane had been there, that last accident where the young man from the motorcycle was still in critical condition at Main Medical Center, that wouldn't have happened because.
I'm not sure. I, I think he was heading, I think he was heading westbound and somebody pulled out. So I don't know if that would have helped there, but it wouldn't have hurt, I'm sure. So that's all we have to report. Um, I guess, being an observer, um, I'm really appreciative of, uh, Senator Ingerson and, and, um, Representative Perry for sort of being there and, um, providing additional support for the towns, uh, on the town's behalf. I think having both select board members at the first initial meeting, both selectmen, um, Labby and Dewboys, um, really helped us as well. I think that both, uh, both engineers from both locations, uh, were, I think, surprised that we had so many people that were concerned about being there. Um, and at the meeting on Wednesday, um, both, um, uh, Donna DeKindren and, uh, the neighbor on the other side, uh, Malanson, uh, came over and spoke to us. Mr. Malanson engaged into the, uh, process when we were talking and Donna came over and spoke to both Terry and I after, um, just giving their observations of what happens there. And I, one of the things I think that was clear eye opening for that group of, um, folks was that they, at the residence, as well as Wayne and I, and I think Henry weighed, weighed in as well, just telling people that, and it's significant. Andy, Andy came in late and, um, also provided, um, information that, you know, we're talking miles of backup, um, that happens there on those commuter times. So I don't think they were aware that that was actually happening. Um, and then when they were hearing it from people that were experiencing on a daily basis, then I think it, it meant something to them. So we'll see. That's all I have to report on that.
Okay. All right, the quick claim deed?
Yeah, just to, just to let you know, and I think I provided it, uh, that the deed has been recorded. Um, we now are the proud owners of three hundred and seventy-two square feet of intersection at Brimstone and, uh, Limerick. Um, and now we can sort of move forward with whatever plans we want to have there on that, on that intersection.
Which we no longer have money for.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, I think that gets to.
Some of the back to property.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I think that, I think that lays into my next, um, my next discussion is the remaining ARPA funds that we have. Um, right now, according to, um, Deputy Treasurer, we have just over eighty-seven thousand dollars remaining in ARPA funds that we have to commit before the end of this year. So, um, I am now looking at, um, ways to, to use the funding. One of them could certainly be, um, uh, based on the criteria that I observed again today, could be on that intersection, we could use some of that money there. Uh, it would not, based on the last, um, projection we had there, it wouldn't come close to paying for what has to happen at that intersection. Um, but it certainly would be a, um, be a piece of it. Uh, and then the other thing is that we can use it for technology enhancements. And, um, if you've been frequently looking at our, um, our, uh, cost for our new IT provider, you can see that having IT support from a very large and very connected company costs a heck of a lot more than it did when we had one person, uh, working down in Kennybunk to provide us our IT support. Um, and with it comes the, the state of the art firewalls, um, uh, their recommendations to upgrade, um, uh, hardware that we presently have, that's, you know, believe it or not, some of the hardware that we have here is five or six years old already that we brought with us, uh, from the other locations. So, um, and we've really been here since almost four years, believe it or not. So, um, those types of things that we could use it for as well. So, uh, we're, we're gonna continue to look at that. We're gonna try to have something in front of you, um, at, at your first meeting, probably the end of, uh, the second meeting in September or the first meeting in October to try to establish where we want to spend that money, um, and, um, what project we want to take on. Obviously, we're gonna have to have a special town meeting to allocate those funds for that purpose. Um, but that would exhaust our funding for our ARPA funding that we had.
We have to commit by end of year, right? Is that what you said?
It has to be committed by the end of the year and the project has to be done by, uh, twenty twenty-six, I think.
Now, what was the, what did Roger estimate that Brimstone Road intersection?
I don't know. We had BH two M that gave us a hundred and, what, a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand?
I thought it was less than that.
Well, okay.
But you know, the, one of the things that we've been able to do in the past, because we've had a full, full crew, is that some of those projects were something that we could do in-house. Right now, Terry's actually struggling to have enough help to really get some of these, these types of projects done. So it's our view that, um, this would be a project that would have to go out to bid.
All right. Cause if I remember right, Roger said that's something that he could do, and that's why it was so cheap. He said we, he could have.
Well, yeah, uh, and I think he was talking when we had a full crew.
Yeah, that was, that was back three years ago. Yeah.
So anyways, that's one of the, one of the things that we could, uh, certainly use it for. Um, so we'll put together a list and we'll, we'll vet it a little bit more. I know the, the fire chief sits down, likes to, likes to use some of it for, uh, for fire purposes and, cause he hit me up on turnout gear the other day, so. But he's gonna be up against some OSHA regulatory soon that are gonna affect us a great deal. So something we'll need to talk about as well, but, um, that's where we are right now on, on the, uh, ARPA funding. And finally, for us, I, I think I put it in your, your packet, uh, uh, sent us, MMA sent us another, um, to vote on the executive committee. And what I would like to do is just have you folks, uh, provide the authority to me through a motion and a second to go ahead and sign the, um, uh, sign the MMA, um, executive committee agreements, uh, on behalf of the town.
I didn't see that in the packet.
You mean to tell me I didn't put it in there? I was probably assuming that you were gonna approve.
Quick claim deed in the packet either.
I sent it to you.
Yeah, don't look at that now, could you provide us? Okay.
If you'd like to, like to see it, here's a quick claim.
Uh, that's right.
And, um, yeah, I didn't put the MMA at, uh, the Vice President Executive Committee. Um, what they're looking for is to, uh, appoint, uh, Justin Porey as a town manager in Monmouth, um, David Sears, a town manager in Frenchville, um, Michelle Cole, who is a select person in Bethel, and Matthew Garside, who is a manager in Poland to the executive committee. And I, I would just, um, seek, uh, a motion and a second to allow me to sign this on the town's behalf. So moved.
Motion's made and seconded to allow that. All in favor? There you go. Okay, we've got food truck, Great Wave sushi.
Yes, and black salt, and we'll see.
Yeah, and black salt, yeah. What'd you say, Dan?
He didn't send.
He, he's, he's trying to confirm that I didn't send it to him.
There, here it is right here.
All right.
Oh, so these are, um,
Both gonna be at Vinegar Hill.
Yes, both of them. Yeah, as I said, the, the first one will be the twenty-third of August and the second one will be the twenty-fifth and the tenth of October.
And there isn't more than two at a time.
That is.
Those dates, correct?
That is correct. And again, with approvals that I've done in the past that have indicated that that, that, that location that's next to the road is not, doesn't meet the required setback, so cannot be used.
They haven't used it all summer.
I didn't think they had.
Every time we go by, it's, it's, it's empty.
I make a motion, we approve the Great Wave sushi and Black Salt, they'll all see for Vinegar Hill on the dates that are specified in the package.
Okay, motions are made. We have a second? And we have a second? All in favor? You have a question, Tom?
No.
An extension.
He's abstaining, yeah, one extension. One extension?
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Uh, the next thing we had was the, uh, mass gathering or, uh, uh, permit for the Arundel Historical Society. They've provided their paperwork. I've given you copies in your packet. They're set for, the date of the gathering is September fourteenth, starting at ten o'clock in the morning for a couple hour, for possibly eight hours. Paperwork seems to be appropriate. I would, uh, obviously, uh, seek approval from the board, uh, to sign it and also waive any fees that are associated with it.
Make a motion, we approve the mass gathering permit along with waiving of the fee.
Okay, motion's made. Was that a second? All right, all in favor and one extension?
Oh, you, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
You're abstaining.
Yeah, I abstained.
All right, here, here it is. Got it signed for some.
Okay.
You gotta say, don't sign it.
Yeah, no.
Let me put today's date on here.
Sure. Sure. We all, we all set to move on? The next would be the, uh, club liquor license for the Paternal Order Eagles. Um, they've provided all the necessary paperwork. You will notice on the top of their permit that their actual permit expired on eight eleven twenty twenty-four and they reached out to the state and got a one-day reprieve, uh, to go to eight twelve twenty twenty-four, so they would be legal. Um, all paperwork seems to be in order and would recommend, uh, a motion and a second for approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the application.
Yeah, second.
Again.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? All righty, there you go. Oh, yeah, I didn't even notice that. And there you go.
Finally, I have an application for a catering permit um, for, uh, Funky Bow Brewery and Beer as part of the event, uh, for Trail Fest here at the Arundel Municipal Building. The date of the event is, um, September twenty-first from eight AM to one PM. Um, be seeking approval, um, for this, from what I understand. And Henry's here, if you have any specific, um, questions on it. They'll be roping off a section for, um, for Funky Bow to, to offer these, um, to the appropriate, uh, adult beverages to people that are qualified to have them, so.
They have to go through the state domain first or?
No, they have to get the, they have to get approval from us and then they can get, then it goes to the state, yeah. Similar to a liquor license in the, in the club, uh, application.
Yeah, motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
And second, okay. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Just like that, Henry, you're all set?
Do you have a permit from the state?
There you go. We do not have a payroll warrant. I think all we have tonight is just the payables. Motion to approve the payable warrant. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Got that? Good. All in favor? All righty.
All good, Bill?
All set.
All set?
Yep.
We've signed everything. Do any other, any other business? Dan?
How close are we for setting the mill rate?
Um, I spoke to the, um, tax assessor today. Um, she was going back for rehab. Uh, she's expecting to, uh, her doctor's given her permission to stay out till September fifth, but she's expected to be in sometime the end of the week. Um, couple hours. I told her, pressed upon her the importance of, we'd like to get the tax rate set. Um, and so, you know, we, we have folks that are waiting, obviously the new tax collectors waiting to print tax bills and, um, she has to provide to us one last piece, which is the, uh, uh, TIF information, both for the utility TIF and the cottage TIF. And then, um, with that information, um, we can then begin the process of setting the tax rate. Once a rate's set, obviously, then we'll be printing bills. We have to go from the, the Vision appraisal software to the Trio software to print bills in order to get those out, so. Um, I had that conversation. She's gonna work on trying to be in by the end of the week, so.
And, uh, where do we stand on the rebuild? What's the status on that?
The RFPs should be going out very shortly. Um, I was hoping that I'd have one more conversation with her before they go out.
Thank you. Anything else?
I got one question.
Yeah.
For the chief. Do you know what has happened to the hydrant down at Kees's Pond? Right down the road here?
This, this one here?
Yeah, it's gone.
Yeah, it's been gone for, uh, about a year plus, eighteen months. It got taken out, I think during monitoring.
One of my guys, he was prepared, it was, it was somehow, some way, somebody else did it, whether it's he's a consultant, you know, a lot, yeah, and it was gone again.
Yeah, we've got some issues that we've got. People with town manager, which you are as well. Um, and the town planning. I guess, just, just developments that are, um, the, the problem. The, the problem was, was prior to, um, myself kind of taking over, uh, the direction of the department, there's no documentation. It was all in people's heads. Um, and you need to provide documentation for this type of stuff. So an example would be, um, Oak Ridge Terrace. Um, that was given over to the HOA, uh, just prior to us testing it last year. It's a thirty thousand gallon cistern. We had to put sixteen thousand gallons into it. Documented it last year, went to go check it the other day. It's practically empty. So here we allowed a development to be put in, um, and we've got a leaky cistern and somebody said, oh, yeah, well, it was leaking from the day they put it in. Was it documentation? Well, there wasn't. Um, now we have two years of documentation of there being a leak. Now I've got to follow up with a town planner on who's responsible for it. Is it the HOA? Is it the developer of the, um, uh, of the, that development? And regarding here, we've got to figure out, because they logged it and who knows if they screwed it up even more, et cetera, so. Um, we've got to figure that stuff out, so. Um, yeah. It's in process.
Thank you. So, chief, do we, speaking of cisterns, I mean, we've got a bunch of developments in town that have all these cisterns. Is everything all up to snuff on those?
Uh, we're going out and testing them currently. Uh, we did an onboarding process over the last two weeks, so we took people out doing pump training and that. So the Hison, uh, development, all good. Tam Rocks and, uh, you know, Bartlett Drive and Samantha, all those cisterns are all good up there, so we're going around. And, uh, uh, I think we're probably about a quarter of the way through them at this point in time. The only one that we run into an issue, a, a real significant issue is, um, up there at Oak Ridge. Uh, we had an issue down here on Limerick Road across from the school last year. Uh, we, uh, test, well, we blew it out the other day and I'm gonna test it probably tomorrow when I'm back in or the next day. Yeah, so make sure that that's up and operating, so. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Andy. Any other questions? Anything else?
Motion to adjourn at eight oh two PM.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? There you go. Put all that through the shredder for me. Yeah, yeah.